Yeah.
Good call, because I was looking at that going.
Yeah. And then, um.
While you're on that page, do you want me to?
Yeah, for sure.
On that page, under the discussion, it said that Kyla noted one of the things was additional special education teacher and affiliated services. That's special ed administrator, isn't it supposed to say?
What does it say under the minutes?
Superintendent Welch noted appropriations up 3.88 mainly due to implementation of new salaries in CBA. And second thing was additional special education teacher and affiliated services.
So last year you had six FTEs in the special ed line, which included your administrator, or sorry coordinator.
Right.
Um, now there's seven. So remember last minute, we added that additional case manager. So you're adding, you're keeping that case manager and adding an administrator.
Right. So that's, but that's what I'm saying. Shouldn't this say additional special education administrator?
It just says seven after that.
Well, I mean, because we're not adding, I mean, we're keeping that position that's already there. We're not, we're not adding another special ed teacher. We're doing an administrator.
So to be clear, from last year's proposal, there was only five case managers.
Okay.
This year's proposal, there's six case managers and an administrator. There's seven.
Okay.
But currently.
Yeah.
Practicing.
Okay.
Catch me if I'm wrong, because I have a lot of schools in my head. Um, there are five case, six case managers and a coordinator.
Correct. Correct. But the coordinators, isn't that in the line item?
They're all in 1200 account.
Oh, you're.
So which is why it, it's not like a separate.
I just didn't know if we wanted to specify that we were adding an administrator as opposed to a teacher. Because I don't want that to.
And it's in this one way too.
Be misinterpreted. Pardon?
Six, it says right in the notes, the budget, six FTE, set teachers, one administrator.
Yeah.
Seven total in that line, which is why it's up.
Okay. And then the other thing under Medicare, Medicaid.
What page?
Oh, same page, just down below. Medicaid costs can be recouped, da-da-da-da, for OTPT, da-da. And then it has rehab assistance slash school counseling. So is that a thing? We, we recoup for school counseling? I couldn't remember that.
For some school psychologist services.
Okay. I was thinking, I was not thinking psychologist. I was thinking, um, the school counselor. So I don't know. That was just my take.
So instead of counseling, you wanted to say psychologist?
Yeah, I mean, because we can't recoup money. I don't think unless you can, but I don't think you can. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it.
And then on page three, again, where it says 3.8, it should say 3.3. And that's all the notes that I had. Does anyone else have any further notes?
I think there, I think there are a couple of other places where it says 3.8 on page four.
Yeah.
So. The hand is for the note purpose, just because it's draft.
All right. So would someone like to make a motion with those changes?
I would.
Okay. Second, someone second?
I seconded.
All in favor of approving the minutes with those changes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Ascensions? Perfect. Uh, principals report. I'm gonna toss it over to you, Tanya.
Uh, the big news under enrollment is that we have had a recent influx of students for whom English is a second language. Just today, we had two more students register. And in the past month, we have, we had an additional three students. Currently have seventeen kids, as of literally this moment, we have seventeen kiddos um, for whom they qualify for English as a second language services. Um, at least three, three or four of those students speak essentially no English. Um, so that is a big change for Plymouth Elementary School. Um, the students' primary languages include Chinese, Russian, Spanish, and Hindi. So it is a very wide variety of kiddos who, um, services. Uh, I had posted after our last meeting, uh, and spoken to Amy to let her know that we would be posting for a parent educator to support that work. We will be nominating someone in non-public. But I think it's pretty important for the taxpayers of the town of Plymouth and the residents to know that we're excited to have a diverse population here and to support those students within the building. So I think that's the big news. I did put in front of you the current, um, home room title, home room totals. So you have that and the grade level totals and the wing totals as of today. So those, those are up-to-date numbers in front of you. Um, they range in size from thirteen to twenty. In the seventh grade, we have two whole rooms of twenty, which is, you know, getting to be as big as we would want those grades to be in 2021. Um, it certainly is, you know, that's, that's a big, big class for our current setup in this building. Uh, want to let you know about some recent school events. December was incredibly busy. It was a sort of short month of three weeks here between Thanksgiving and Christmas. We had the Reads Across America event, which, um, we pivoted because of the weather, but that was a very nice event. We had the Elts Hoop Shoot, the Jingle Bell Run, which benefited a winter program, which was a huge success. The Catify Holiday Shopping at Ladders and Step Ladders. We had a middle school dance up in Hampton. Um, and we had the winter concert, concert, um, that last week before school. Coming up, uh, in the near future, tomorrow night, we have the fourth through eighth grade winter concert. Uh, starts at 6:00 PM. And then winter program starts this Friday. And we have a lot of organizing still to be done for winter program to get off the ground. As you might notice tonight, Jenny Lee is not here and she has been out sick, um, since before, I mean, I don't know, but since before the holidays. So we have a lot of work to do between today and Friday. So the front office will be working to get that off the ground with the rec department. So the rec department is, as you know, taking the bulk of that work. There are still many details that need to get figured out before Friday. We'll make that happen. Um, on January 15th, Plymouth Regional High School staff will come over to present to the eighth grade students during the school day uh, about the course program and the supports at the high school and the CTE program. So we look forward to that visit. That is new. We have not had that presentation style prior to this year. So we're excited to have them come and present to the students. Mr. McDonald will organize a meeting for the eighth grade parents so that they can get that information. I think that we will decide to hold off on our parent meeting until after the student meeting happens. So that if there are changes or updates that we become aware of through that meeting, we make sure that the parents get the most updated information. Uh, in terms of curriculum instruction and assessment, January is our mid-year benchmark testing window. We conduct Ames Web assessments and a number of other assessments to all students um, to monitor their academic progress. It's extremely important. Do you have a comment in the, yes, this is a video. And is it working now?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that mid-year benchmarking is really important for us to know, are students progressing? How do we need to shift our instruction and work to, to meet the students' needs? So that will be happening during the month of January. Uh, in the area of student support, we continue to distribute our weekend food bags, um, and distribute warm clothes and holiday gifts. Uh, we're working with multiple grades on interpersonal skills, friendship skills, and being social detectives. So that is ongoing work. Uh, and the student support team will be looking at responsive classroom training for the staff and, uh, within the building. Responsive classroom is a program, a nationally recognized evidence-based program that provides, um, professional development and structures to school around building positive school, school and classroom culture um, and how to respond to misbehavior. So that is a project of the student support team. In the area of co-curricular, uh, clubs, wanted to let you know that Brian Chan is starting a fifth through eighth grade chess club once a week for six weeks. And he already has seven students signed up for that, mostly fifth and sixth graders. We've been looking at underrepresented students in sports and other co-curricular activities and have to make sure that we're providing opportunities for kiddos who maybe don't gravitate towards, um, the athletics. We certainly, you know, Nano Rymo was a phenomenal opportunity for those kiddos, um, as the math team. But, you know, we're trying to get creative about how to engage all kiddos in positive activities. Uh, wanted to also let you know that Ellen Hand will be, as you know, coming back to direct the school musical during the month of March. And we are working, um, to see about the, the staff, people who will be supporting her and that. Um, there's been some changing, um, shifting in what people will be doing in terms of supportive roles for Mrs. Hand. So stay tuned with that and we'll, we'll let you know as we get to recruit folks to, to support the musical project. Student shout-outs for CARE awards. Sadie Wills, Kaylee Brett, and Alice Keel received CARE awards right before the holidays. So congratulations to the three of them for their, um, positive behavior in the intermediate wing. For teachers and staff, we wanted to shout out Sarah Samborn for organizing the Ladders thrift store shopping adventure and the Jingle Bell Run. We'd like to thank our friends at PSU, Brian Chan, and Candace Tett, who happened to be here for organizing and delivering the Holgate gifts to about eighty students. And coming in the side door right now, we are going to thank Jen Weatherby for organizing the middle school ser- community service day. So, um, like to thank all of those folks for the things that they have done to help create, um, positive opportunities for our kiddos. PTA meeting is this Wednesday at 6:30 PM here in the library. Uh, and wanted to let you know that our facilities crew worked hard over the break, um, accomplishing some tasks that are hard to do when the building is full of kiddos. Um, many small projects were accomplished. Uh, sensory swing was installed. Lighting fixtures were fixed throughout the building. The sound panels in this space were updated, the blue sound panels. And many, many, many windows were washed. So, um, thank you to the facilities crews and their hard work. And that is all I have for public support.
Hi, Tanya.
Are you funding these work? They're the same sound panels that were here. The blue diamonds are the ones that I, uh, was referring to that were replaced.
And they match?
Blue gone and up.
Tanya had arts and crafts.
And they match?
They do match.
Very matching. Very matching.
It saved us about $20,000 to have John, Corbin, and I do that project instead of having them all replaced.
Same. Thank you.
Tanya, in regards to the English as second language students, you said that their arrival, it unlocks special services. Can you talk more about what that is and what we have to cover as a school system?
Sure. So students, when they enroll in public schools in this, I think, I believe anywhere in the country, it's a federal law, they have to do what's called a home language survey. And they indicate on that survey what their primary language, what the child's primary language was, is in the home. And based on that, students are screened by our certified ESOL teacher. And they, that person, Elise Bones, uses, uh, the state mandated program to screen kiddos. And based on their screening, they're given a range of, a, a score based on a range of numbers. And that number then indicates the level of service and, uh, instructional time that, that she or her support folks would be seeing and supporting that student. And that is federal law.
Yep. So does that mean that we, so we have mandated work that we need to do or services we need to provide? And do we have the resources to do that? It, it sounds like we may be looking to hire someone to do that. Can you talk about what the?
So let me talk a little bit about it historically and then where we are today. So his, in the, historically in SADU 48, there was one, there was, there were contracted service providers who provided that service. And we, we billed for the, a certain number of hours per building. Okay? Then, um, it was determined that Plymouth Elementary School was going to hire someone. And some of her time was billed out to other schools because the need was growing a little bit more.
Yep.
And then it was decided, actually Plymouth Elementary School needs all of those hours for our students here in this building.
Yep.
And now, in the last month, it was determined that we actually need more services than just one FTE.
Yep. Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does. So it sounds like we're going to have two full-time employees covering this responsibility.
Correct.
Okay.
One, one is an aide and one is a teacher.
Yep.
And Mrs. Bones and I work together to move through that process of hiring someone.
Yep. And so that, those, those two folks, that comprises the scope of what we need to provide?
Today.
Today. Understood. Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Yes, absolutely.
Are those students spread K, K or pre-K through eight?
K through eight.
Okay.
Um.
They're sprinkled throughout?
They're sprinkled, absolutely. I would say that, um, interest, I don't know why this is. There seems to be a particular increase K2 and seven, well, as of today, six, seven, eight. So.
And do we have computer programming that, that can support them as well?
So there is a computer program that the state DOE does, uh, allow as, uh, as a service, approved service activity for those service hours. Um, currently, we are not accessing that computer program. We are working to have it be in-person services.
Okay.
We have to get creative because statewide is an issue. Under 50% of students in ELL are not getting the services statewide that, that are required federally. So there's very few personnel that are certified in that area as well. Uh, and just alone Plymouth Elementary's increase is substantial in the past five years. I mean, ten years, we had ten, maybe ten students, K through 12, all sharing one person with very mild needs. And just in that, I mean, those need that have been on the board for a little while. A couple of years ago, we put an ELL teacher in this budget, hoping to get some reimbursement from the other schools like we usually have. And then this year, there will be no reimbursement. And so that increase is a substantial change. And it's a substantial change in culture sometimes as well to have so many services and having that, you know, more folks kind of needing that level of intervention. So it takes time and, and there really is, that is on the shortage list as far as, uh, credentialed, uh, teachers in state.
And so that second para that will be hired to support the ESOL?
To support. Yeah.
That is built into next year's budget? Or it is not?
Not at this point.
Okay.
So we need to amend?
Okay.
Oh, we don't need to amend it. Okay.
Okay.
Maybe just look at the end of the year and see what you can cover, um, and what shift we could add based on the, the special ed population. And is, uh, what's required for that. I think it's also important to note that the regulation allows any, anyone who is a certified educator within regular education, I believe it's only regular education, um, can provide those services if they're duly certified as well. So another option we've considered is to see what it would be like if some of our regular ed certified teachers got duly certified, what that would entail for them. Are they interested in that? Um, so, or a mi- yeah, it's a minor assignment. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Tanya, excited to hear about this one.
Well, I don't have a lot to say tonight, but, um, so just a couple of quick things. Uh, tonight was our fifth and sixth grade basketball teams, uh, last game of their season, uh, over at Lumney. Uh, I will say that both of these groups have had some really fun and entertaining games to watch this season. Obviously fun back and forth ones. Like, uh, tonight, the boys team, uh, lost on a buzzer beater with, uh, five seconds left to go. Uh, so it's been that type of scenario for them. So it's been, it's been really fun. Uh, I do want to say, um, great thank you to, uh, Colleen Moore, who is our boys coach, um, and had 23 boys on his roster. Um, and did a great job rotating those students and making sure that they all got really ample playing time and had fun. And then Brian and Richard Tracy, um, took on the roles, 516, and also just did a great job. So very appreciative of them. Um, quickly, our Nordic skiers were supposed to have their first race this Wednesday. Um, it started at the Sandwich Fairgrounds, got moved to Waterville Valley, and then today unfortunately was canceled, just a lack of snow. Um, so we're hoping to get them over to Fulham next on Tuesday for their first, you know, this scenario. So. And everybody else, Seven, Eight, and Rustling are going strong and still have a long season to go. Uh, quick update on safety. We, uh, do have a safety meeting coming up this Wednesday, the eighth. Um, I do want to say that one of the topics on the agenda is, um, just, uh, building evacuations, but particularly during cold weather. Um, back in December, in fact, it was, fell on Community Service Day, um, we had an unplanned fire alarm go off. And, um, so everybody was, was heading out. Um, you know, some with jackets, some without jackets. It did happen to be kind of a cold, rainy day. Um, again, unfortunately, and many thanks to Plymouth Fire Department, they were able to pinpoint what the issue was. Very good.
Andy, can you mute yourself? Thank you.
And, uh, so Plymouth Fire Department was able to, uh, to, to locate very quickly and then get us back into, into the building. Um, today, the high school has the same scenario. Unplanned fire alarm goes off.
Ooh, cold day.
Their normal protocol is to come over here to the elementary school, wait outside. Obviously, they came inside today, uh, and went all inside the gym. And so, um, again, really impressed, um, and by the actions of our faculty and staff on that day when it happened. Uh, it was Community Service Day. That whole middle school wing was spread out everywhere. Um, the grades were mixed. And, um, they did a great job of using those rosters for all the activities that the kids were involved in to, um, do some quick accounting and make sure that we had all of those students accounted for. Um, and then today, everybody's bringing to action, poor Dave McVanis, who just set up her gym with all of the volleyball nets and that's going across. And I'm running into the gym and saying, Dave! So, uh, you know, it, again, and it all worked out really well. Everybody did what they needed to do, uh, good communication. And, um, so we're very appreciative of that. Um, so, yeah. So that is really it for me at this point.
Does anyone else have any other questions for our principals? All right. Perfect. Thank you very much, ladies. For village of the floor number one. Yes, Paula.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, Paula Tanner, I am the co-president of the Plymouth Education Association, or Nancy Stock. Um, we have had, um, quite a few concerns raised, um, in the last two months by our association. Um, Mr. Orlando started off tonight just by expressing to you our, um, increase of ELL students. Um, this is where our part of our position can be challenging. Um, but our members have requested that we put our concerns in writing to school board and to administration. Um, our members were a little taken aback that the board accepted the proposed budget so quickly last month. Um, we recognize that everybody's working really hard in this community, the taxpayers, everyone here in the building, the board. Um, but times are changing and we need you to really look at our concerns. And myself and Nancy met with Mr. Orlando and Mrs. Carey prior to vacation, and while was over vacation. Um, but it's, we feel that it's time that we need to make a systematic change in order for our school to continue to move forward with everything that we're being compounded with. So I am going to come around with letters for all of you to read during, uh, private session. And we hope to hear. We really do, we think it's important, um, for our organization and for the teachers here as well as the students. So. If you don't mind.
Thank you.
Paula, go down. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Paula. Simple, please. Anyone on Zoom? I'd like to see your thing. First, the village of the floor. All right. Moving on. Special matters, more articles for review.
Sure. So based on, uh, our conversation for the last two months, uh, we put together the warrant articles that you recommended uh, to move forward to the hearing. So I took the packet in front of you just to review the draft. Uh, the first warrant article is typical. It's reports of agents, auditors, committees, and officers. That's the usual piece. Uh, Article Two is building repairs in capital reserve fund. So, um, we talked about the $90,000. So to see if the school district would vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $90,000 for replacing the gymnasium doors and DRA components, science lab, HVAC, and authorize the withdrawal of the $90,000 from your current capital reserve. So you don't have to put it in the budget. That was Article Two. Article Three is an article that you've had for a few years now, um, and that is if there are funds left over at the end of the year, that $50,000 of that goes back in to replenish that fund. And then lastly, you do not have, um, negotiations this year. So there's no teacher.
Excuse me, just, um, pause for a minute. In that Article Two, it says no amount is to come from general taxation, but then it said recommendations required.
That just means the board recommends the article or not.
So down the next one, Article Three, it does say the school board recommends this article.
Yeah, you have to vote on this, this, this one. That's one you've always had there. So this is just a draft. And then we'll, we'll put it together in a formal.
I see. Okay.
But that's, Article Two is a new article for you. So that, once you vote on it, then I'll put the board recommends this article.
Okay. And then it's a majority. It doesn't have to be though, um, I mean, it's just sixty percent? Yeah. So sixty percent, I mean, they just do that, A or B?
No, I think more than fifty percent. It's only, yeah, it's no, no supermajority.
Okay.
Super majorities are typically on bonds and stuff like that.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. Additional, uh, school. And then the operating budget is the last one. It's the, uh, total of the 3.3 increase from the previous year. So that's the operating budget is the last one. So four articles.
So the only question I have about Article Two is we're not really raising and appropriating the sum because we're going to be pulling it from our capital reserve account that already exists. So, wording.
I think that's the wording from the DRA because Dan puts this through the system. Um, and that's how it's, it's, um, formulated. But I could, I could also check on that piece. But I think that's how.
It just seems odd that it's like, you want us to raise it, but then we're going to take it.
It may just be. They're appropriating, they're, they're approving the expenditure, the withdrawal of the.
Yeah. And it may just be the language of a warrant article because I know that there's specific language that has to be in there. Um, but it just seems odd that we're going to raise and appropriate.
As opposed to just appropriate?
That's come up before. It, it still may be that's the way it's written.
Right, right.
But, uh, but if that is, I'll check.
Can we just withdraw authorization of withdrawing the $90,000 from the capital? But if you can just, you know, can we just withdraw authorization of withdrawing the ninety thousand dollars from the capital reserve versus the, versus.
It is more confusing for the public.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check, sometimes it's, like I said, it's very scripted by the D R A, and they just give, they just.
It's to raise, makes it sound like it's coming from taxes.
Correct, that it's, it's not correct.
Right, but we're just.
Versus authorizing the withdrawal.
From the savings account.
From the capital reserve, yeah.
It's already raised.
It's already raised.
That was the only thing that, uh, because we're not raising, I mean, we already have it, we just want to take it, so. Um, but I know, again, the language is, so that's the only thing that would. Okay, a question. I think you can say, that like we've done before, is authorize the withdrawal for, from the building maintenance capital reserve fund for, X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
I think that language is okay.
I'll, I'll double check if it is easier, easier to write somehow than hopefully.
Yeah. Wonderful, thanks. Do you want us to vote on these?
Yeah, because the next meeting's the hearing.
Alright. So, can we edit them, or do we have to check with Dan to see if the language can be changed?
You could, you could just put what the intent is, and I'll just get the new one before the hearing. I'll have the new, new draft if that changes at all.
Okay.
So this is all stuff we discussed last meeting?
Yeah.
Yep, so do we need to move, to accept this?
Yeah, yes, to move into the hearing.
Can I move that?
Does that mean it cannot be changed after we do that?
With the intent.
It can, it can, it can be, if like, if there's, if there's some wording that can be changed, we're, we later board meeting right before the hearing, I can just bring that, and you can just approve the new, the amended order.
Okay, so.
What's nice about that is it allows us to see the school board recommends this article, to see if like, as is, right?
Yeah.
As it would be.
Right, I'm just thinking, but if we make a change next time, right before the meeting, is that's, that's not too late?
So, so the reason for the hearing is to always listen to things, but you can always change the order, you can always change.
I see, we can change it after the hearing either. Okay, great, thank you. Okay.
Alright, so there's a warrant on the floor. So I'll do, I'll second you. Okay, all in favor of accepting the insert?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other business?
Uh, no other business.
Privilege of the floor number two. Alright. Everybody sign the manifest, thank you for the care of that.
The audit signature, whatever on the audit pass, without any issues, so we should, we might have on that.
And then, no correspondence. The sign still following us?
Yeah, just that correspondence, and then I will leave, go to non-public session for personnel, you got it.
So, just need to go through the care of that, so, so.
So moved.
Second, second.
Second.
All in favor of adjourned or non-public?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming.